Oh, okay, that's that one we already talked about that.
Yeah, that goal that uh.
That's the letter, okay, gotcha.
That's just.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, she is required to attend for Cleveland County, whatever that is.
Oh, okay.
She not, she not checking up on me?
Oh. She don't know what you're doing.
Hey Dana, what the, what, what match the?
Uh, third, I think it was the third round. I don't remember who y'all were playing, even. I think it was the one you, I don't know if y'all won.
I think it was the one.
Oh, really? Yeah. Wow.
Embarrassing, huh?
Yeah. High school fans, oh, we'll get into it.
Well, yeah, we mushed them. Somebody, and they were too, you know, you're used to kids growing up, I mean, they never played tennis, if it's been like baseball and soccer and, or you're. It's nor- the normal to be.
Sure.
A little malady.
Yeah, I was always glad when, you know, Sam got cut from baseball in sixth grade, which led him to tennis.
Yeah.
And I've been so glad about it because at tennis matches, you gotta be quiet. You don't have to, you don't have to hear the fans all the time. Hey, Tony.
Hey, how are y'all?
All right.
You done?
Hey, guys.
Hello.
I can't remember, did we lease these things?
The Chromebooks? I don't know. No, probably not.
I don't know either.
I hope not, they're like two hundred dollar laptops.
Yeah.
I'm sure we don't lease them.
Say if the lease runs out, we need a bigger screen.
Yeah, I got mine blown up far as I can get it.
I mean, I'll admit, I was all for this electronic stuff, but.
And, and my. Just had my cataract surgery, you know. I get back here, I can see it fine, right here, I can't see it, so if you see me leaning over, that's, it's good, right, it's good now. Getting old is no fun, I can tell you.
No, it's not, Tom.
Uh, you know, yeah, right, yeah, come on. I got, I got you about twenty-five years, thirty years.
I'm fifty-one in like a, fifty-one in like a seventy-one year old body, or eighty-one year old body.
About seventy-eight.
Sure. I hope I can live to seventy-eight.
I hope you can too.
I'm the one that reviews it, but, um.
You gotta have goals.
There's a box found in the desk of stuff that they expect to twenty-twenty that needs pictures. If I had a hard copy today, if we're sending me pictures of this box, I'm like, need signature for this, I can have it in twenty-twenty, I was like.
Is the land use part just an update?
I.
Is that something more valuable to.
I, I think it's just the update.
Okay.
Whenever we do the final one, I, I hope we can get a hard copy, because I, it's too hard to sit back and pull it through on the computer.
Unless we.
Something you need for reference too, so, whenever we adopt it, I hope we'll ask for a hard copy.
Unless we get hung up on court replacement, we should be out of here pretty quick.
We're having, still having a closed session.
We are, yeah, yeah, actually two different things, but shouldn't be too bad.
And then I can still.
Yeah, you just, you just wanna talk to the council or you wanna say, but you can do it during your public coming, or if you wait until after, everybody else will be going anyway, and that'd be perfect.
Yeah, just about the council, it's personal.
Okay, good deal.
I need you, thanks, it's breakfast.
I'm getting pretty hungry myself. Can find one of them here either.
I may need the council.
Yeah, of course.
I'll make sure.
I got you.
Thank you, as always.
What are we, November, November?
Probably don't want to print this out.
I used to, my stack served all like this, I was like, that's enough.
I've got some drawers to clean now.
My wife did like it, I was just like, it's a few months old, use a Goody Firestarter, I was like, yep. It's all, it's on the website if you need it again, so.
All right, we'll call the November Town of Boiling Springs Town Council meeting to order. Uh, welcome my wife Sarah here, so I'll be on my best behavior. This evening. First item of business is adoption of the agenda. Are there any, um, suggested changes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Councilman Green, with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant, all those in favor, let it be known by casting your vote. All right, the agenda is adopted as presented. Are there any citizens present that would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda? All right, hearing none. Uh, we'll move on. Mr. Evans with the Gardner Web, Gardner Web University update.
He got a long list.
I prepared a couple thousand things here for you this weekend. Gotta get used to it being dark out here, that's the, that's the problem. Uh, starting out, just wanted to say thanks for every, to everybody that participated and was involved. It seems like it was a couple months ago now, but homecoming, uh, happened between this meeting and the last one. Um, from our standpoint, it was a huge success, the crowd, the fans, the football win, the barbecue competition, all of that, um, all of that culminating into the amphitheater, we, we was, that was amazing. We could not have expected that. I, I saw a few of you out there, um, sold out crowd. We've got the next concert actually coming up this weekend. That's my long list I brought with you today, or with me today, uh, is to remind everybody, we do have another concert this weekend, um, Balsam Range, and I believe Fireside Collective is opening, um, and so come on out and support that. Uh, right before that, we play for another championship in football. Um, last year was a big deal, we won, went and played in the, um, in a playoff game, won the first one in school history, so we're gonna win the second one in school history hopefully this year. Um, going through that, couple other events to put on your calendar, Founder's Day, um, and Festival of Lights on November thirtieth, so we'll have that, uh, some of you came out to that last year, um, invite the whole town and anybody that wants to come out and participate in that as well. Um, I'll leave these posters here, but, uh, thanks again for the opportunity to come out and share a few updates tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda, uh, quite a few things, uh, some several, several budget amendments, mostly dealing with grants that we've received. If there is no questions, if there are no questions, then we can, uh, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Councilman Green with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant, all those, well, you can vote yea or nay electronically.
My voting bar is gone somewhere.
Yeah, it lost the. No one might be able to get it back.
Says I voted.
Said you voted.
But I didn't.
Oh, there you go. Thank you, no? Next item of regular business then is dealing with covert replacement. We had three bids, the lowest bid, Father and Son Enterprises, um, which, that is the recommendation to award our covert replacement projects. I don't know if anybody wants to speak further on that, or if council has any questions.
I do see that Odom Engineering, the Engineering Record, made the recommendation to proceed with them. I do wonder though, why the substantial cost difference, and did they have any commentary on that? And, and substantial, I mean, Father and Sons was fifty-eight thousand, the next bid was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and the third bid was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, so I don't know if we had any additional content? No, I mean, if the Engineering Record says it's good, then we're good, but.
Well, it was similar, similar numbers on a previous bid.
Yep.
They've done work for us before, maybe not Mike, and was it good?
Yes. Okay.
No, it's a good point, I, I have the same thought, but it was, it was the same, similar last time.
Yep, it was a major difference, I noticed it too, but.
And it could just be they didn't want the work, so, if they're gonna get it, they're gonna get it.
Do I hear a motion to award that bid to Father and Son Enterprises?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let me cast your vote.
I'll never get used to this.
All right, that, um, carries unanimously. Next item is an update on the land use plan, Mr. Bad, or Mr., not Mr. Bad, Mr. Parker?
Good evening, council. Um, the North Carolina General Statutes, uh, state that we have to have a reasonably maintained land use plan, so, uh, at the beginning of the year, the town entered into a contract with Bolton Mink to provide that comprehensive land use plan. Um, Mr. Bab is the, uh, project manager from Bolton Mink, and so, um, three things to keep in mind while he's presenting the plan. The first one is to remember, the plan develops goals for the town for the next ten to fifteen years, whatever you all decide is reasonable. Um, secondly, it is recommendations for what we'll do, they're not necessarily concrete, and then the third thing is to keep in mind that this is an aspiration, so this is what we hope to do and what we hope to see there, so it may not necessarily align with what's presently, uh, being done in that area, or the present use of a, of a parcel may not exactly align. Um, but if there's no questions for me about the process, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bab for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Zach. Um, as Zach said, I'm Andrew Bab with Bolton Mink, had the pleasure of leading this land use plan update since the beginning of the year. What I wanna do is just talk through the process of how we got here, um, and what the plan includes. I'm gonna answer any questions if y'all do have any. Okay, so what is a land use plan? Um, in the first place, as, as Zach, uh, said, land use plan is intended to be a framework and a vision for twenty-plus years into the town's future. Um, it's intended to identify goals and policies and specific action items that the town and its partners can undertake to help achieve that vision that the community has articulated to us. Um, it's intended to identify where growth may occur and how we want to manage that growth into the future, um, and it's really intended to provide a guide for everybody who's involved in the development of the town, including council, planning board, investors, other community partners, so that everybody's working from the same playbook. Um, why are we updating it? As, as Zach pointed out, um, we have a requirement to the state to have a reasonably maintained, um, land use plan, the most recent land use plan's from two thousand and nine. Um, what constitutes reasonably up to date is open to interpretation, but fourteen years feels like long enough. Um, one of the things too that we like to do whenever we do have to come through and update one of these plans is to use that opportunity to really talk to the entire community and understand what that vision is for the future, and we hope that we've done that in this plan as well. Um, so like I said, we've been through all through the process a little bit here. We've been at this since, um, near the beginning of March, um, with some phases of doing some research, talking to the community, doing some writing and making some decisions, and coming back to the community. Um, wanna talk a little bit about what we heard from the community in those processes. We did two rounds of engagement with the community, one in June and a second in September. Um, we came out in June, we actually had a joint meeting with the Park Master Plan that's ongoing as well. At that point, we were really asking people what they wanted to see, what they loved about Boiling Springs, what they'd love to see in the future. Um, we also brought some of the materials from the two thousand and nine plan for people to review, um, to let us know if they felt that those things were still directly applicable and didn't need to be changed, or if there were changes needed in that process. When we came back in September, we really brought a lot of the material that's in the plan document today, and asked the community to give it a look and let us know if there were changes needed before we took it to this step that we're at now today. Um, some of the major things that we heard from the community in this process, I could spend a whole hour talking about what we heard, but I wanna keep it a little bit brief. Um, people really love Boiling Springs, how it stands today, they love the small town feeling, they love the family-friendly atmosphere that you have here. Um, there is a desire for some controlled growth in the town, to bring new businesses into downtown, to have more access to amenities, um, and that really reverberated through a desire, you know, we articulated it here, is a need for public spaces that cater to all ages and different groups, and that included people talking about wanting different features in the park. That spoke to different, um, age ranges and different interests, but also in businesses, things like cafes and restaurants, um, to better serve people, you know, in the evening hours especially. There was also a lot of feedback that was centered around desire for more, better infrastructure, especially things like sidewalks, bike facilities, um, and maintenance of what's out there today. Um, so that's what we use as the basis to develop the plan itself. Um, the plan as it stands is organized around seven elements that are shown on the screen, economic development, land use and community design, housing, transportation, recreation and open space, historic, cultural and heritage preservation enhancement, and public services and infrastructure. In the plan document, each of those elements starts with a discussion of the existing conditions in the town, um, where we're working from, and then includes a goal for that element, a number of objectives that support that goal, and a number of action items, um, that the town and its partners can undertake to help reach towards that vision, uh, that the community has. Um, not gonna go through every single action item tonight, um, 'cause I think we all wanna get home, uh, at some point, but I do wanna mention one, which is that last week, there was a meeting related to the Park Master Plan, um, and it started a discussion about the, um, public, Public Works Yard out here, and so we've added one that's not in the copy of the plan that's in your packet tonight. That's to look at future opportunities for an additional or relocation of that yard into the future, so I just wanted to bring that up since it's not in the copy in your packet. Um, what I do wanna spend a little bit of time today is talking about the character area map. Um, one of the requirements of a land use plan is to have a future land use map, and this map satisfies that requirement. As Zach said, this is fundamentally forward-looking, fundamentally aspirational, this is not regulatory, this is not replace, or, you know, compromise zoning in any, any way, this is just a vision of how the town could develop physically into the future. Um, I'm gonna go through each of these areas in a little bit more detail. I also wanna mention that there is a map out here and on page twenty-two of the report document, if that's helpful at all, but we've organized these areas into four kind of broad categories. One is centers, that's where most of the activity happens in town. Now, there's residential areas, most people live, there's employment areas, um, obviously, where there is employment, and open space, environmental resources. Um, so with that, we'll start with central business, that's where we are right now. We're in, you know, the, the traditional heart of Boiling Springs, and so we have a desire and an articulation for more commercial opportunities in this area, things like, like shops and restaurants. Um, also the potential for, if, if the demand arises, some well-integrated residential uses, whether that's townhomes or small, um, apartments or second-story walk-up, something like that we think would be appropriate in the future as well, if that arises. Um, in addition to those, we have a series of neighborhood nodes. These are really located at kind of the four corners of the town, one on North Main, one on South Main, one on East College, one on West College. These are the other primarily commercial retail areas that exist today, and we expect this to continue into the future, so these are expected to be, um, really what we call neighborhood-serving retail. They serve in areas, you know, that's smaller than, um, the whole town, or smaller than the county. Um, they include things like grocery stores, small shops, restaurants, and in the plan, we've kind of articulated that as these things continue to grow and be developed, we really want them to be well-connected with their residential areas that they're near, so those people have easy access to those things and don't always have to go out to the main road, just to go to a shopping center that's, you know, two hundred feet from their house. Um, in residential areas, we have three, uh, categories. The first, low-density residential, this is really around the edge of the town, um, and a little bit into the ETJ as well. This is generally speaking, unseward residential, so larger lots, primarily residential, also with some civic community uses, right, churches and parks are perfectly appropriate in these areas. Um, from there, as you move in towards town, we get to medium-density residential, this is generally speaking, sewored residential, so you have smaller lots, since you don't need to have septic tanks, um, still generally, single-family detached homes, maybe occasionally you get a duplex or a couple of townhomes, something to that effect in these areas as well. And then finally, we have what we're calling high-density residential. When I say high-density, I don't mean high-density for Charlotte or New York, I mean high-density for Boiling Springs. Um, the downtown master plan in particular had, um, a few recommendations for increased density residential right around downtown to kind of help build the town and create, um, so a twenty-four-hour district. Um, so we've, we've added this and expanded it in some areas to, to kind of accommodate that and incorporate that into the land use plan. This is probably, um, either small lots, single-family detached homes, maybe some townhomes duplexes, triplexes, those kinds of things. Um, in addition to those residential areas, we've got employment areas. This is areas generally that exist today, there's not a lot of forward-looking here, but just a document where we have institutional and civic uses around the town, things like libraries, cemeteries, um, the Y. We also have a few industrial areas, um, in the, yeah, industrial parcels around town. Maybe? There we go. Um, so we just documented those to show that we don't expect those to change, um, into the future as well. Um, and then finally, mostly in the ETJ around the edges of town, we have an open space farmland conservation area, you know, these are generally agricultural uses, maybe some incredibly low-intensity residential, um, other civic and community uses as well. Um, and with that, I'm happy to take, answer any questions y'all may have about the plan and the process, how we developed it.
Questions?
Appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that takes us to staff and council comments. Of the land use plan, okay, thank you, sir. Um, is there a motion to approve the updated land use plan?
So moved.
All right, Councilman Edwards, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant, uh, and you can vote on that, or, all those in favor can say aye. If you want, I don't see the thing up there.
Uh.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
It would be possible for us to get a hard copy of this report, be something good for, you know, reference and flipping back and forth, and kinda hard on the computer.
All right, that land, I'm sorry.
I, I'd like one, I don't know if anybody else would or not, but I'd like one for my own, for, you know, for my reference, so that I can study it and look it, look at it and use it as a document. Like I said, I, I did look at it very thoroughly on the computer, but it's kinda hard flipping back and forth or something you wanna review, so a hard copy would be nice.
Ms. Stansberry? You have any comments, reports?
Um, I just have two things to report on this evening. The first is on the courtyard. The planning department held a meeting with McGillan Associates to approve the final design of the courtyard. This design was almost identical to the one that council had been shown. The courtyard will have multiple open seating areas, parking spots, and it is convertible so that we can use it for music on main events. McGillan Associates hope to have the project out to bid by February. And the other update is about the Park Master Plan. Uh, Mr. Saldo and Mr. Parker met with Paul Coons, the project engineer, this morning. Mr. Coons has submitted several proposals to staff, which will be reviewed by the administrative team tomorrow morning. Uh, staff comments and concerns will be gathered and communicated to Mr. Coons ahead of next week's steering committee meeting, which is at Wednesday at one P M. A final plan is scheduled to be brought to council at the January meeting.
Very good. Councilman Edwards?
I would just like to congratulate Tommy and, uh, Mr. Ellis, Bill Ellis and Ron Wood on their election into next year, um, and I would like to thank this council for the opportunity back in February of last year to, uh, back fill a seat. This has been an awesome opportunity for me. I've really enjoyed it. It's been a good time meeting new people, building relationships. Um, I look forward to continuing to stay active in the community and, uh, I'll finish off the year and hope to see everybody around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Gant?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Councilman Litten?
I'd like to thank, uh, Caleb Evers for his service. You know, he, he came in and has, has done an excellent job, and he's offered a lot of insight to the board in his short time here, so we, we thank you for that, and I congratulate, uh, Bill Ellis and Ron Wood. We look forward to working with you, thank you.
Councilman Green?
Well, I too would like to echo that, uh, uh, when Caleb walked in the door, I had, had no idea who he was, but, uh, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, and you've served the town well and with, uh, utmost dignity and respect, and, uh, you've brought something to the table, and I really appreciate that. And Tanya, I've known you a lot longer than I have him, but, uh, we appreciate your, your service too, and, uh, uh, I'd just like to say that, uh, I hope our friendship is, our friendship is not conditional on your serving on the board, so I hope our friendship will continue and we.
Oh, my boys are asking to come back to your board as well, I heard.
Anytime, anytime. Uh, and I'd also like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Wood and, uh, Mr. Ellis on their election, and look forward to, uh, working with them, and I think the next four years are gonna be great years for Town of Boiling Springs. I think there's a lot of good things in the works and, and, uh, I'm looking forward to the next, I think when we look back in the next four years, we'll see, hopefully, an entirely different downtown and with the, with the grants and things we've been able to receive, so looking forward, and excited about the future, so, that's all we got.
All right, thank you.
I had one other thing, I, I, I did miss Tanya, you know.
You didn't say anything, so it didn't come to mind, uh, but we did thank you.
I'm quiet today, right now, anyway.
You're a business person in town, and you brought a lot to council and a lot of different perspectives, so we do appreciate you, I bet, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you to our staff who have, uh, worked so hard in, uh, these last couple months under different circumstances without a town manager, and really getting, uh, things going and keeping it going, uh, just amazing. Uh, the best staff in America, right? Uh, Mr. Ellis, uh, and, uh, you know, um, thank you to this council, always forward-looking, always thoughtful. Um, thank you to Mr. Evans, good luck this weekend. Uh, back-to-back conference championships would be, would be real nice, hopefully, uh, the Bulldogs will be running, and the Chargers will be heading towards the state playoffs as well, so it, it is exciting times. Look forward to seeing everybody at the Christmas parade next, uh, already a week from, from this Sunday. So, uh, uh, we're, we're looking forward to the Christmas parade, and then our, our Christmas tree lighting, uh, on December the second at six P M., uh, where I will get to read the Grinch once again, um, to the kids, but, uh, but seriously, thank you, uh, Tanya and Caleb for, for what you've done, what you've brought to this council. Um, you've, you've pushed me in ways to help me think about things in, in different ways and in more depth, uh, so we do really appreciate your service. Look forward to, um, Mr. Ellis and Mr. Wood, uh, coming to, to join the, the board, uh, here very soon. All right, uh, we.
Can I have one thing?
Please.
Uh, I just wanna say that I plan to continue the, uh, Justin Longino parade of dress, so mine came in the mail today, so, uh, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting.
So that will be worth your.
For my wife.
That'll be worth the price of admission, for sure. We have, uh, we need a motion to enter into closed session for a couple of items.
So moved.
All right, so we have that, uh, motion from Mr. Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant, all those. Second from Councilwoman Gant, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we are now in closed session. Good evening, everyone.
You're thinking three people, I, and I can't think, that's my problem, so congratulations, Tommy.
Same for me, for, I have to, I don't write, make myself a mocha.
Speaking in front too is not one of my screens.